Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the town of Sherburne zoning board of appeals. It is Tuesday night, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Few minutes after seven, we're getting underway in our agenda. Uh, board member Zach McBride hasn't joined us yet, but we're gonna take some non-controversial matters that the other three of us can handle.
He's coming in now.
Yep, okay, never mind. We'll start once he's in. There he is. Mr. McBride, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, sorry I'm late, I could not locate my devices, thanks to my cleaning professionals.
It's all right, you're here, we're glad to have you. All right, so we haven't started the agenda yet, we have started the recording. Um, first up is petition two thousand and twenty four dash ten Dana G Pope for renewal of a special permit for a three point two point two accessory dwelling apartment at twenty six Bullard Street. Um, he is not here tonight, he's asked us to take it on the paper, so to speak, um, which we are allowed to do. I think this is the second maybe or third renewal of this, and as far as I- Okay, and I don't think there's been, has there been any controversy with the zoning enforcement officer or any neighbors or anything like that?
Nothing.
All right, does anybody here have anything to say for or against the requested renewal for an accessory apartment at Dana Pope's property, twenty six Bullard Street, Residence G District? Anybody? Jean, I don't see any hands. Okay, board members, um, seems like this is a pretty, pretty much for a layup. Um, I, I move that we renew the petition on all the same conditions as previously for, what's the term on these, Jean, four years?
Four years.
For, for the standard four year term, that's my motion.
I second that.
All right, seconded by Mr. Fitch. Any further discussion, Mr. McBride, Mr. Labby?
No.
No.
Okay, um, moved and seconded, um, all in favor say aye, we'll do it by roll call, no backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right. For zip, I'm sure everything else tonight will go just as smoothly. Uh, next up, request of Todd McDowell based on development, one year extension, uh, for two things, one year extension based on development's comprehensive permit for the Coolidge Crossing project, um, and to approve the transfer of the local initiative forty B permit dated June twenty one, two thousand and twenty one to Toll Brothers. Is there anyone here to speak for Mr. McDowell, Mr. McDowell?
Yes, good evening, thank you for having me on tonight. Um, just, uh, as you know, I'm sure Toll Brothers has been in touch with the town, they've been working diligently with Natick and Framingham regarding water and sewer agreements, and that's been taking longer than everyone hoped. Uh, but it's still being diligently pursued, so we are requesting an extension of the comprehensive permit for a year, as well as, uh, our ability to, we're asking to transfer our comprehensive permit that we received, uh, two years ago to Toll Brothers.
Okay. Um, is anyone, anyone else here to speak in favor of the one year extension and/or the, and/or the transfer to Toll Brothers? One once, going twice. Jean, I don't see anybody. Um, how about anybody speaking against either the transfer or the extension?
Nothing.
Don't say anything, okay, great, it's great, um. I move that we approve the request of Todd S McDowell based on development for a one year extension to the comprehensive permit dated June twenty one, two thousand and twenty one, and that we approve the transfer of that comprehensive permit to Toll Brothers. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
Moved, seconded, for the, uh, just for half a second, Todd, is that gonna be specific enough, is it Toll Brothers Inc., is it Toll Brothers Sherwood Homes, is it something? Or we're just gonna use-
I, I think that's specific enough at this point, uh, I, I think it's a minor modification anyway, so I don't even know if a formal vote is required, but we'll take it.
Right, right, I, I thought it would be easier for you and your records to say you had the vote.
Um, yes, it would be.
So, moved, seconded, any further discussion, board members? Don't say any, oh, Mr. McBride.
Sorry, no, none for me.
Okay, um, all right, uh, all in favor, vote aye, opposed nay, move by roll call, no backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, Mr. McDowell, you got it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Will you let Jeanie know if there is some writing that Toll Brothers or you guys or your lawyers are expecting on this, and if your lawyers want a writing, maybe they could provide us a sample of what they'd like to see?
I can, uh, I'll discuss them tomorrow, and, uh, I'll be in touch with Jeanie.
Yeah, and, and if they say we don't need anything further from the board, that would be fine with us.
Yeah, then it may just be copy the minutes, I mean, that, that could be all it is.
Okay, whatever, all right.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it, have a good, great night.
All right, next up, the main event. Um, Phoenix Partners Farm Road Development, I'd like to bring up a couple of very minor procedural items first. Um, see Deshaun is is Bob Murchison on?
He is.
Okay. Um, Bob, I wanted to ask on Washington Street, a purely procedural question. Tetra Tech is here tonight for Farm Road, of course, they're also the same people for Washington Street. Do you want them to come in two days to, uh, weigh in, uh, on Washington Street, or are you gonna wish on Thursday that you had them stay home, and that is you're entirely up to you, I mean, you're paying for them, so-
Yeah, no, I, I mean, unless you think they need to be there, Rick, I, I do not, um, I think what, what Steve said in the email is correct, which is that, um, uh, they've, uh, are standing down until we come back with, uh, a modification, and, you know, I think it's gotten around town by now that we're in conversations to try to, to do that, um, yeah. Look forward to having those conversations, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have this conversation on Thursday night, but, um, I, I don't see any need for them to come.
All right, uh, um, Peter Dillon, um, Steve Blay, I know you'll be depressed not to spend Thursday night with us, but but maybe you'll be able to, 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 to find the emotional strength to get through that, I hope you will. Okay.
I'll try, Mr. Chair.
What?
I said I'll, I'll try, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, um, all right, next procedural question, also to you, Bob, um, is, and I assume I know the answer to this, but with all the rumors flying around about what Murchison's gonna do here, there, everywhere, you know, the rumor mill probably doesn't always, uh, report on your doings perfectly in your view, um, is I, I'm assuming Farm Road, the project we're gonna talk about tonight, is still in the process, you wanna continue in that process as?
Absolutely, I, I'm seeking approval for the project, absolutely.
Got it, okay, absolutely, okay.
Yeah, that was, I was worried that, I was worried that people might think otherwise, and, uh, that, that is not true, I am full speed ahead.
Right, well, that, that's why I wanted to ask it right up front.
Exactly.
And, and I also wanna ask right up front, and you do not have to answer this if you do not wish, uh, your expectations for this evening, as of now, whether or not you expect to further extend, and the answers might be, I expect yes, the answers might be, I expect no, the answer might be, I can't tell, or you can make up a fourth category of your own.
Um, I mean, I think that, um, my desire would be to, uh, kinda have the conversations we need to have tonight and see where we are, if there's a if there's a particular reason to extend to get more information into the record, uh, we can have that conversation, that's not my inclination, I will tell you right now, um, but I'm, I'm willing to listen, you know, this has been a process that we've tried to work together, so.
Okay, got it, a perfectly fair answer, thank you, um, all right, so this question is to everybody, um. Are there people on the line, or their counsel, or their other representatives, who would like to make any sort of presentation tonight? If you'd raise your hand, just, I'm just trying to lay out who wants to talk, who want, a lot of people have submitted materials, and we're grateful for all of those materials from the applicant side, and, and also not from the applicant side, um, but if there's someone who says, wait, I want airtime, I wanna be able to make my case as a lawyer or, or as a consultant, I wanna be able to argue for X or Y or Z. Uh, Daryl Beardsley. Do you wish to make a presentation? Your electronic hand is up, Daryl.
Yes, I know, thank you, uh, yes, on the variance list.
Uh, boy, we can't, we can't hear you, you're totally broken up, it sounds like, yes, you wanna make a presentation, but-
Yes, on the variance list, and I think I will dial in by phone.
Okay, and, and how long do you think you will need? Just, just guess a bit.
Less than five minutes.
Okay, excellent. Okay, um, anyone else who, as of now, thinks they wanna make a presentation? Says not, does not foreclose your rights to partway through, say, wait, I've had a great idea, or I've got something I wanna talk about?
Um.
Mr. Murphy. Yeah, I see Mr. Murphy, Murphy's hand up, Mr. Moore's hand up, Mr. Moore.
I just, I'm sorry, Nancy Dennis's hand up, I would have deferred to counsel, so if he wants to go ahead, that's fine with me.
Dennis Murphy, speak for yourself, if you would, please.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board, I submitted a letter a month ago, I, I don't think I've spoken to my letter dated April twenty third. Uh, if the board would find it helpful, I'd be happy to walk through kind of the technical regulatory things that were in my letter. Um, but I don't have any specific presentation in mind, so I, I would just ask if the board wants to hear that, I'd be happy to present.
I'll, I'll, I'll rephrase my question to you, do you wish to do that walkthrough for us?
No, I think the letter speaks for itself, so unless, unless the board has questions, uh, I'd, I'd rather we try to get through the materials, um, that others wanting to address.
Okay, fair enough, board members, um, I think Mr. Murphy's letter speaks pretty well for itself. Um, Mr. Fitch, Mr. McBride, Mr. Labby, what do you think?
I agree.
Uh, Todd, there you are.
Yep, I agree.
Zach? All right. All right, Mr. Murphy, you were so eloquent, it needs no further, needs no further, uh, discussion.
Thank you.
Um, okay, um, okay, so before we die, I get, die further to meet, I wanted to do a little Q and A with Peter Dillon, where are you, there you are, Peter. Um, and, and Peter, sometimes, uh, wait, Tom Trainer, did you, were you trying to say that you wanna make a presentation?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, at the appropriate time, I'd like to, on behalf of the groundwater protection committee, just make some comments, uh, primarily on septic, but, uh, not, not a formal presentation.
Okay, and, and how long do you want for that time, is that like a five minute, is that five hours, uh, somewhere in between those two?
Uh, two, two to five minutes, please.
Glad it was not the latter. Okay. Uh, oh, Mr. Dillon jumped off, there you are, you jumped off my screen. Okay. Um, and I wanted to walk through, uh, some of the differences with you, um, on three ten CMR, uh, fifteen point twenty sixteen and point twenty seventeen. Um, I think I understand what you were saying in your answer on article on section fifty eight, but I sort of wanna step through it with you to make sure I got it right. And I will say upfront, a lot of questions and answers from lawyers sometimes end with, and, gotcha! And this is, this is not one of those, this is not one of those. I, I, I'm, I'm hoping at the end of this, it's like, okay, great, I understand, you, you explained it to me.
All right, there's a couple places where I gotta gotcha, but anyway, go ahead.
All right, well, if you gotta gotcha, that's fine, I'm just trying to say, I'm, I'm not trying to do that here. All right, so if, if, if I've read the regulations correctly, three ten CMR fifteen dot twenty sixteen is sort of the the norm, normal case for land like in Sherburne where there's both water and sewer system, and that's the, no?
So, all right, so if you look at the court case that, that, that was submitted by Mr. Murchison, uh, versus, versus Sherburne Board of Health.
Yeah.
That, that if you're, if you're meeting, um, fifteen point two one seven, then two, then fifteen point two one six doesn't apply, and if you're-
Well, that, that, okay, now, I, I, I'd rather, I'd rather you answer based on the regulations as opposed to one land court's judge's very unusual interpretation in one case. Because I, I, I'm thinking, if we're ruling based on fields of Sherburne, we've all made a gigantic mistake, we ought to be able to stay away from that, so, so pretend you never read that case and never heard anything from Murchison or anybody else about it. Um, just tell, just tell me what the regulations say.
Exactly, so if you go back and look at, um, the, and I'm not, not gonna have the right citation, but it's two before two sixteen, I think, maybe it's two one, two. Um, basically, it gives you an option, um, it gives you an option of either using, to meet the nitrogen loading requirements, it gives you an option of either using, um, a recirculating sand filter, uh, or, and then it says, or um, aggregation of flow under fif- uh, fifteen point two one six, or you can use fifteen point two one seven, which is, um, which is basically using an enhanced nitrogen removal system, that, so that the, the, and, and honestly, this is a new thing for me, because I've been asked to do nitrogen loading calculations on thirty jobs, and this one actually kind of clarified it to me. Is, is that, that nitrogen loading calculations per se, unless you're gonna aggregate the flow, are not necessary, as long as you can meet basically four hundred and forty gallons per day per acre, or use an enhanced nitrogen loading system to get to that point.
Okay, so, so I, I, I think that's where I'm trying to go, but let, let me try to recap it, just, just to make it clear, it, it sounds like, would it be fair to say that your answer to number fifty eight is based on the fact that what's being used here is an enhanced nitrogen loadings, nitrogen treating, enhanced nitrogen? We've got there, enhanced, an enhanced system?
Yeah.
That, and they hit, the enhanced system is what puts it under fifteen point two seventeen, I think it's one.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and it, it's not because of, uh, it's not because there's credit land or any of that stuff, it's just because they're using an enhanced system here.
That's correct, there is no credit land in this, but, so the aggregation, you're not aggregating, you're, you're using a system that's approved for a certain gallons per day per acre. Now, I did make a mistake there, uh, I looked at a wrong part of the, of the approval, and that's been called out by the, the Board of Health. Um, it, the approval, I was looking for under two thousand, at, at, the system's under two thousand gallons a day. The system is good for five hundred and fifty gallons per day per acre, which they squeak under.
Okay, all right, so again, dumbing it down for non-engineer people like me. In the ordinary case, without credit land, without special thises and that, it's four hundred and forty gallons per day per acre, and ten, uh, is it micrograms per liter?
Correct.
Right? Um, but an enhanced system, because in theory, there's been some level of, and maybe pre-treatment isn't the right word, but that's the one I'll use, because there's been some level of treatment, um, you can go to five hundred and fifty gallons per day instead of four forty.
That's correct.
Because, because this is an enhanced system, and the system they're using this, uh, it's not the right term, it's not service star, but, uh, um, it's it's the one all the engineers, that, that, in your view, legitimately qualifies for this enhanced um, system treatment, and therefore puts it under fifteen point two seventeen as opposed to point two sixty.
Correct.
Oh, okay, see, there was no gotcha, all right, I think, I think I understand, um. Okay.
May I make a slight, uh, addition, Rick, to what you, I wanna add something you said, not what Peter said. You, you mentioned the ten, uh, uh, milligrams per liter, that only applies under two sixteen, that is not in two seventeen.
In, in, all right, fair enough, so follow up question to Peter Dillon. Um, the five hundred and fifty gallons per day, can it be fifty milligrams per liter, three hundred milligrams per liter?
The assumption, the, the assumption in the, in the provisional improvement of the treatment system for a system of this size is that it will meet twenty five milligrams per liter, which allows them five hundred and fifty gallons per day per acre.
Okay, got it, so, so, so the ten becomes twenty five, and the four forty becomes five fifty, only because they're using this system.
Only because they're using this system under the Title V regulation fifteen point two one seven.
Okay, and i- i- in your view, as, as, as the town's peer reviewer engineer, you think that those calculations are reasonable and fit, and, and fit the qualifications of the, uh, uh, the, the, the handcuffs that the state put on that system in terms of its provisional or final approval, or whichever approval it was?
Meets Title V, yes.
Meets Title V, okay. That was very helpful, thank you. Um, and by the way, other people on this call may disagree violently with all of what I just said uh, with Mr. Dillon, and there's no requirement to agree with me at all, uh, as a matter of fact, I was just trying to get that out on the table. That's sort of, that, that's the working assumption, Peter, of Tetra Tech saying in item fifty eight, we think this is closed.
We think this is closed.
Got it, okay.
Is that, is that one thing that I'm saying, is, is that it's not six sixty per acre in my letter, it should be five fifty.
All right, so I'm, I'm sure you could send us a supplement to your letter to correct it. Okay, Mr. Fennel.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, so Arthur Fennel, fifty eight Farm Road, uh, I, I tangentially understand this, I understand obviously more of the legal aspect, and so bringing that to the stow case, I don't think that that is dependent upon, I, I don't think the ten milligrams per deciliter is dependent upon what sort of system it is or either of the, the CMRs, so I think there is evidence that this is more than ten, regardless of whatever the system is, however it all shakes out, and I think that brings it within the reach of the stow case, regardless of which CMR path you go down.
Okay, uh, interesting point, and, uh, Chris, are you a Chris, Christopher, or Chris, or? Mr. Alphen?
Yeah, Chris, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Christopher Alphen.
Yeah, so, and, and, and you're, you're, you're subbing in for Paul to, tonight, and I assume that your rejoinder to Mr. Fennel would be something like, uh, the stow case talks about what's dangerous to the neighbors.
Right, that's exactly right, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly right.
And, and so you, you might argue with him as to whether or not five hundred and fifty gallons and twenty five milligrams per liter was dangerous or not.
Right, the, the important part is that the, what the peer reviewer is concluding here in this instance, that it complies with Title V.
Right, that's his view, got it. Okay.
Sorry, then, then my mistake, I thought this was relevant to the, in the stow case and the effect on the neighbors.
Um, well, it, it, it Christopher Alphen, tell me if I'm getting this wrong, it is relevant, Arthur, in the sense of simply saying it's above four forty and ten, won't necessarily be conclusive proof here that it's dangerous to the neighbors, because the measuring standards are a little different. For this system, it's gonna be five fifty and twenty five, and then the question is how do the nitrates get where and at what levels, and, and who's affected downstream?
More or less, that's right, yeah, correct.
Yeah. Okay, because, because I, I don't think the argument in stow was that the system was inherently badly designed or inherently, uh, dangerous, it's just that as applied in that location in stow, it was going to be dangerous to the, to the neighbors.
Correct, and I, and I, and I think that there's evidence in the record that that's the situation here, I understand that reasonable people are disagreeing recently.
Uh, okay.
I understand it's conflicting evidence and conflicting expert opinions, but there was some evidence on which the board, substantial evidence on which the board could rely, that that is the exact situation here, or that could be the situation, or at least it hasn't been disproved, I know Bob's shaking his head. Reasonable people can disagree, and his expert is gonna say one thing, and the Moore's expert has said another thing. And even if, even if ten were the, the deciding factor, there's evidence in the record also undisputed that less than ten can be detrimental to the drinking water of neighbors, but.
Okay, got it, as you, as you say, all that's in the record, Mr. Murchison?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, so this, this number ten that's being thrown around is a number that comes from two sixteen, okay? And it's a, it's a, it's a amount that can go across the property line, under two sixteen. We are not, as, as Pierre, uh, said, we're not subject to two sixteen, so that ten number is not a regulatory number anymore. I take Arthur's point that there is some number at which it becomes problematic, however, I will point out and just remind everyone who's listening, we did, even though it's not required by Title V, we did a nitrogen loading analysis, Desheng did. And he did a scenario analysis where he came up with a result that was crossing the property line at somewhere between, as I recall, three and six. The, the, the number six, the highest number in his analysis, was assuming that our treatment system that you were just talking about, which allowed us to use two seventeen as the regulatory authority, right? He used that that system failed and was not working, and that's what got it all the way up to six, okay?
Wait, wait, who, who, who's, who's the he in your sentence, you're saying, Deshaun only got up to six?
Well, Desheng, Desheng provided a scenario analysis, it was a nitrogen budgeting, uh, analysis, and he provided several scenarios, and what I'm reminding us all is that the, the worst of the numbers was six crossing the property line, okay? That six assumed that our SeptiTech system was failed, it wasn't working. And so I just wanna, you know, that's our science that we provided to you, and I wanna remind people of that. As it turns out, we were not required by Title V to do that analysis, but we did do it. We, and we gave it to you, and we stand by it, and I just wanna remind everyone.
Yeah, got that, and, and everyone else stands, stands by their things. Mr. Moore, quickly, and, and then I'm gonna try to get off this track and back on sort of where we go from here, cause, and, and by the way, I'll take the blame, I took us down the sidetrack, cause I wanted
That's fine.
I wanted Peter to sort of explain to me how, how, where we were here.
Just like Bob, I wanted to remind the board that our expert also offered a written, uh, review twice of the different, um, systems that were proposed at, uh, Farm Road Homes, and in both cases drew serious doubt about the system's capability of achieving compliance with, you know, the relevant standards for drinking water at the property line, and he also, um, reviewed some of the other, and critiqued some of the other information that was presented in support of that. He's done it in, uh, speech in these meetings, he's done presentations, and there's a lot of other stuff in the record about why that nitrogen process might not actually work that well, especially in light of the fact that there's bedrock under here, and everyone who is a neighbor is relying on that bedrock for their drinking water, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, okay, so, um, thus ended the sidetrack down which Rick pushed all of us. Um, uh, let, let's try to get back to where we ended the last, um, hearing, which was, people were gonna go away and come back, hopefully with, hopefully with some unified views on soil types and things like that, there was gonna be a meeting, those meetings occurred. Um, it sounds like, um, Desheng, uh, turned in, I think on May eighth, if I recall it correctly, a detailed report on, on how he thought things went, um, the Board of Health has sent in some materials on how they saw things went, they sent in, again, something tonight, and Steve Booley and Peter Dillon sent in, uh, yesterday, the twentieth, um, I think it was about one thirty that was emailed to some of us in the town, I don't think the Board of Health got it until later in the day, uh, their update, long-awaited updated, um, report. Do I have the bidding correct there, gentlemen? You don't hear any yelling, that's good, I probably got it at least close to right. All right, well, for now, we'll, we'll, we'll assume that's the bidding, so, given all of that, Bob Murchison, you sent in, was it yesterday or the day before, um, a memo to, I think, the Board of Health, saying, here's how you thought all this sorted out, you thought the soils had been resolved by this, you had, you had your views of what Tetra Tech had to say, and, and I'm assuming-
I hope we'll let Tetra Tech have their say.
Right, right, perhaps they can speak for themselves, but, but just trying to, again, get the puzzle parts out of the table. That was your position on where things settle out.
It, it is my position, and, and, you know, we sat in a meeting with, uh, the Board of Health, and with Peter, uh, and Jeremy Marsette was there as well, and we had a discussion about soil type, and, uh, Mark was stuck uh, on the perspective that, uh, you, it is better to run the soil through your hands and come to a subjective, uh, determination, uh, and I think Peter and Desheng, and, you know, I'll weigh in, but my opinion doesn't really matter. Um, Desheng and Peter agreed that the gold standard, uh, was, uh, the sieve analysis testing, which we did. There was some discussion about where the, uh, the level- uh, was, uh, the sieve analysis testing, which we did. There was some discussion about where the, uh, the level that the, uh, test soils came from, and, uh, Peter asked that, uh, that, uh, DeShang put his engineering stamp on a statement, uh, saying where they came from, uh, which he did. Um, and, um, so I feel like, you know, we've satisfied the town's peer reviewer that the soil type is as DeShang has, uh, presented it, um, and as obviously as the lab has presented it. And I saw today that, um, uh, the Board of Health has asked for, you know, some, uh, uh, neutral party soil evaluator to come out and, uh, run it through his or her hands, and I I mean, why would we go backwards? We we've, I I've spent the the time and the money uh, to do the gold standard test, and the test is dispositive as far as we're concerned.
Okay, well, let's, uh, a- as you say, let's let the peer reviewers speak for themselves. Um, Steve, Peter, I don't know which one of you wants to speak, but can you walk us through, um, sort of where you were at the end of the last meeting and where you are now? I think in my sidetrack, we got a little bit of a preview of some of it, but if you could take it from the top, that would be, that would be useful.
Yeah, okay, I I'll speak to that. Um, yeah, so I I mean, I can't say exactly where the test pits those, where those samples came from, um, and that's, I I I can tell you that it definitely came from the sea horizon, which is the lower part of the of the, of the, um, of the pit because of the basically the size of the material that was, was in the sieve analysis. Um, that said, uh, as long as they were taken from the proper place, the sieve analysis is far more accurate than, you know, basically squeezing the soil, which I can do, and I'm I'm been doing it for a long time, but, uh, but the, but the, um, you know, the the all and end all is always a laboratory test that's approved by ASTN.
Okay. So your view is the issue of what's the soil, sandy loam, loamy sand, loamy loamy, double extra sand, or whatever, has been settled by, um, by a by a lab that in which you have confidence?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, and is it, uh, so wha- what else was open at the end of last meeting that you think is now solved? Sounds like two s- two sixteen versus two seventeen.
Yeah, alright, that's that's solved, I think, so the nitrogen loading issue is solved. Groundwater mounting is still required, um, under, uh, because the system's over two thousand gallons a day. Um, we went back and forth on the hydraulic conductivity number and the saturated thickness. Um, I I I think, I think it, and it took a while, but I think that we finally got that resolved, so the mounting calculations meet Title V. Now, I'll keep coming back to that, meet Title V.
Okay, um, and I I, i- i- I'm I'm not hearing that as being defensive, I'm hearing it as being, you being careful, saying, I'm not saying this is the world's safest system or the world's least safe system, I'm saying, I, Peter Dillon, I'm saying, listen, there are articulated standards in in the regulations of Title V, and this system meets them.
That's correct.
Okay. Jonathan, you're the litigator, he'd make an excellent witness, wouldn't he?
Yes, he's doing damn well.
He 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 answers the question and only the question, and not a whole lot of, like, he's not being evasive, he's not jumping around.
I've I've been there before.
We 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 need to send you down to New York, maybe you can show some witnesses how to behave. Alright, that's a joke. Um, and it didn't say whose witnesses it were.
Yes.
A lot of room for disagreement on that one, too. Um, alright, so what else got solved since last time? Or do you feel that your review work, Steve, and I'm looking at you when I'm saying this, or or Peter or both, is now complete, and that the report you submitted on May twentieth is subject to fixing the, uh, the mistake of five fifty versus six sixty final?
Y- y- yeah, Mr. Chairman, I I'd say, uh, you know, the majority, there were some minor site items that we recommended, you know, some minor items be added to the plan, but I I'd say for the, for the most part, the major, you know, the major touching points in this project have been, have been rectified.
Okay, alright. DeShang?
Yeah, uh, well, I just want to uh, make sure for the soil testing locations, we documented with photos, and we also marked on our latest, uh, groundwater contour map where the two soil was testing. If it's new, submitted to the board, and, uh, so I just want to make sure that informative, uh, things is on record. And, uh, second, uh, I I I understand, so Peter's commented on the groundwater mounting. As far as the design engineer, I think for the groundwater mounting and groundwater separation, we are far more a safe, exceeding the Title V required four-foot groundwater separation, because for two reasons, one is we did all the testings, and, uh, uh, the groundwater accuracy detected was only in couple of test pit, and the other test pit, we're assuming the groundwater was at the bottom of our test pit, and plus the groundwater separation and mounting on top of it, we still have an, uh, average more than six foot groundwater separation. So, so that's, so which be not just to meet the Title V, it's also meet the local, uh, Board of Health required a five-foot groundwater separation requirement. So, so from that perspective, I feel the system is is way safe, and about uh, the nitrogen, uh, budget analysis, I, we would think, uh, you you would think it's very straightforward, but if you're asking ten or including DEP, how to really analyze it, it's a still have some disputed, we don't want to go to the detail, but I have consulted in it with a very senior hydrogeologist, worked in this field for forty years, and I have been worked with the DEP hydrogeologists in the past thirty years in southeast and the northeast and the central region, so, and, uh, so the methodology I used is not the first time, I use it for the fields, I use it for much bigger systems, up to eighty thousand gallon per day system, so, the 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 calculation, as Bob summarized, we not just provided a calculation, but we provided very conservative scenario assumptions, that is, if the treatment somehow failed for some reason, for some time, which will making the nitrogen loading to thirty-five milligram per liter, so even with that one, I'm not going to say too accurate to the six, but our calculation is all six and seven, but it's definitely less than ten, which is required even under the strict groundwater discharge permit requirements at the property line, so that's, those are the, uh, few issues I want to, uh, uh, I did go over, uh, Tetra Tech's review comments, I agree with Steve that it's a very minor one, some is just missing some information consistency, like in our store water pond profile, in the detail was not as we, uh, it's just missing one number, so in a way, we say bottom of the galley at the two oh five, and the stone is a six inch lower, so it means it should be two oh four point five, but we left that at two oh five, that's just a type.
DeShang, I I I I hear you, as we've heard you before, with your, with with your enthusiasm for the accuracy of your analysis, and I and and I I appreciate all of that. Um, the 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 other consultants also have enthusiasm for their analysis, and I don't think eh eh, re- repeating the advocacy that's been advocated is is probably is 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 additive to the board at this point, I think you, I think you've made ma- made your case, and I I don't think repeating it is necessarily additive at this time, unless you've got something new.
No, I'm good.
Okay, alright, Mary Moore?
Uh, thank you, Rick, just a quick question, I'm curious if there's been any sort of ambient level testing or any sort of like current level of nitrogen testing done on the site, and how that may impact, you know, the addition of a large septic system. You know, we're sort of assuming we're going from zero to something, but I'm wondering, has there been any testing, or will there be any testing to see what the baseline is?
Yep, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I but I will let you use me as a way to ask uh, DeShang and and or any of the other, uh, consultants or anyone else with awareness, is there sort of background testing, um, on this site showing the nitrogen levels today?
That has not been done, no.
Okay. It doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like necessarily a bad thing that it wasn't done, it's just a, just a fact.
Information, I think, yeah, the information, it was not required by Title V, but I would agree with the, with the Mary to some degree, but we did review the nitrogen testing in all the neighbors', uh, uh, drinking water wells, so if as claimed, so, which will be impacted, that's a very good uh, background data to be used, uh, as a baseline, so, so fifty-three, four forty, forty-nine, fifty-five, so it's all, it's all very low, it's, I I don't think it's a zero, but it's like, uh, less than zero point five.
Okay, thank you. Um, the responsive answer, always like responsive answers. Okay, um, Michael Lesser?
Uh, Michael Lesser, Conservation Commission, fifty-four Forest Street, um, just to Mary's point, um, as is in the Conservation Commission comments, we are interested in, even if it, albeit at the town expense, that we can do some baseline testing of nitrogen in the wetlands on the, uh, s- below the septic system. So hopefully that's a a condition that will be, uh, included, so that we can get the baseline. Um, and then we can see how things go over time. Thank you.
Thank you, um, it's a good reminder, once uh, pre-existing testing. And Michael, refresh my recollection, but I believe that was written in one of your prior, uh, memos that you sent to us, correct?
No, it's in a few memos recently, March twentieth, you can see it there, there's, we had a few choices when we outlined all the wording specifically, uh, for, for suggested condition.
Alright, March twentieth is is a good reminder, thank you.
Rick, can I just make the quick point that while I'm not averse to having a conversation about that, it was not required at market rate housing, uh, at Abbey Road?
Okay, fair enough.
We have seen stuff with other, in other projects, um, so, and, uh, so, when there's a significant wetland uh, near, that's just beyond the septic system, we did that at the fields at Sherborne.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Um, thank you, I just wanted to remind the board that there's stuff in the record, either from your record or CONCOM or Board of Health about the well that was just installed at fifty-three road, uh, fifty-three Farm Road, having to be, uh, pumped for, I forget if it was thirty days or forty-five days before they're able to obtain a clean test after dumping a bunch of bleach down the well. So I think nitrogen testing would be a very, very sorry, Bob, that's what happened. I think it would be a very intelligent approach to take in this case, thank you.
If you'd like to know what happened with the well at fifty-three Farm Road, Brian, you might ask the person who dug it.
Okay, let let's, without going too far down that particular rabbit hole, pun intended, um, could we agree that maybe there might be reasons why a newly drilled well would have to be pumped for many days to be clean?
We can agree.
Unrelated to the, yeah.
Absolutely, we can agree to that.
Yeah, it's it's not unheard of, okay. Um, i- it's a fact, but it's not a dispositive fact. Um, okay, um, Mr. Trainer, would you like to be heard? Now a good time for you to speak?
It it would be, since we're, uh, on the septic topic, so the groundwater protection committee is very concerned about maintaining, uh, the quality of Sherborne groundwater, and, uh, we have submitted, uh, comments, uh, in into the record for this hearing on July thirty-first, September eighteenth, and January twelfth. Number of concern, but I want to highlight, uh, just one in my two minutes here, a- and that's, uh, a new c- containment of of concern, people may have seen in in the newspapers recently PFAS or per, uh, poly and per, uh, fluoral alkyl substances, and and we bring that up, uh, regarding, uh, this this development, because there's been a correlation found between concentrations found of these forever chemicals, uh, related to the septic density uh, from, uh, from, uh, surface, uh, disposal sites like septic system, so you'll see a bunch of, uh, details, uh, specific to Sherborne's problem with PFAS in private and, uh, public wells in those three comment letters, but suffice to say here, uh, and keying off the nitrate discussion, you know, you know, nitrate is is a natural, uh, metabolite, uh, we all excrete nitrate, uh, and we worry about it at the part per million concentration level, and and rightly so. Uh, that's milligrams per liter, uh, uh, some of the PFAS, uh, uh, constituents, the EPA now has a, uh, drinking water limit of four parts per trillion, which is, uh, ten to the sixth, uh, lower concentration, so PFAS actually is a really good marker now for, uh, septic effluent because, uh, so many of our products that we use, uh, have, uh, tiny amounts of PFAS in them, and they and they're concerned in in the health community, so, a a septic system like this is just I I gotta shake my head, right now in Sherborne, we have four-bedroom houses on two, three, four, five acres that are showing PFAS in their drink, in their drinking water wells. And and the the people at the, uh, DEP, and I've spoke to several, uh, that are are convinced that it's, uh, coming from septic systems, we 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 can't prove that, we haven't proved that, but it's the likely, uh, uh, li- likely source, so something the size of this, the equivalent of like eighteen four-bedroom homes in in one or or two, uh, you know, uh, nearby leach fields, I really concerned about, uh, our committee is very concerned about the short and long term uh, quality of of the groundwater in that, in that part of town, thank you.
Okay, and and Tom, let me just ask a question that I think I know the answer, but you, you work more in this area than I do. Like most towns, we do not have any regulations on our books today about PFAS.
Uh, I'll let the the Board of Health speak, I think, I think they, I think, I think they just added that.
Okay, alright, but but the regulations that were on the books when this application was filed?
That you can check, but i- i- if I may, uh, i- i- if it's okay, if I could key off that question, a lot of our concerns from the ground, groundwater committee are beyond today's regulations, and Title V, our Title V septic systems are not protecting our groundwater for many, many, uh, reasons, particularly synthetic chemicals that are not broken down by, uh, bacteria.
Okay, great, thank you. It said that before, but it's a, it it it's a good reminder. Um, alright. Daryl Beardsley, you wanted to be heard. And I think variances, but you can speak on other topics, you, the Board of Health sent in a a memo, denied at about six. Tell, tell us what's on your mind. And 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 also tell us whether you're speaking as an individual citizen or as the Board of Health Chair. Oops, Daryl?
She's there, but she's muted.
Okay, well, she's logged in, but she could, she could have walked away, for example.
Right.
Um, okay, um.
Alright, can you hear me now?
There we go, we can hear you now.
I was double muted on my phone, okay. Uh, you know what, I need a moment to queue up the file I have, just in case.
I'll I'll come back to you, how's that?
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, um, does anyone else on the call want to be heard on any, any topic, especially any new topic that we haven't covered before, or new information about an old topic on this project? Arthur Fennel?
Uh, hi, Arthur Fennel fifty-eight Farm Road again. Um, so there is one thing that I don't believe was ever discussed. Uh, hi, Arthur Fennell, fifty-eight Farm Road again, um, so there is one thing that I don't believe was ever discussed, uh, actually. Couple of things, if I get the camera working, uh, and that is, uh, in terms of, um, school bus. And if this, I think there are a number of reasons this project shouldn't be approved, but if it were. Uh, I would like the, I'd like to request the ZBA to make a condition. Uh, that there be a school bus stop off of Farm Road within the development in and of itself. I think that's a matter of safety, and I think it's a matter of traffic concern, if you have thirty-two units and two-point, however many kids per unit. Uh, you can imagine the, uh, the amount of traffic and the potential for accidents involving school children would be exponential. And I don't think it's a big ask to condition any requirement.
Okay, let, let, let me pause you there for a second, Steve Booley. Uh, you know your letter better than I do, what does your letter say about that in site design?
I would have to look back, uh, I believe Courtney ran through, uh, estimations based on, you know. Industry data for, for that, but I, I would have to look back.
All right, so, so please do look back, and if you disagree with the request. That the safe thing is to put a school bus pickup spot off Farm Road, let us know and, and say why. Fair enough?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think it's a, it could be a good idea, I, I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be.
Okay, all right.
I believe there was some discussion of, of turnarounds for large vehicles, but I don't, I don't recall seeing anything about school buses particularly, but I think that's a significant concern.
Okay, I bet, I bet Mr. Murchison is gonna try to give us an answer, Bob.
Yeah, so way back when, in September, October, this issue came up. Uh, and the ZBA asked me to, uh, reach out to the, uh, the school folks, which I did. Um, and to be honest, they weren't terribly interested in talking about, uh, a school bus stop at the time. Um, but what I would say is, uh, to Arthur's comment is, I'd be more than happy to. Uh, work on trying to find the appropriate and safe place for, uh, for kids to get on and off a school bus. Uh, obviously, that makes all the sense in the world, and, you know, would, would love to do that.
Okay, got it, all right, and Arthur, this is all by way of interruption, you said you had two points, one of them was the school bus. Sir, what is your second one?
Goodness, now I've, I've lost that train of thought.
Yeah.
All right, as usual, it becomes derailed at night.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, uh, well, if I think about it. I don't want to take a fight, thank you.
All right, okay. Daryl Beardsley, have you had adequate time to gather your thoughts? Oh, she's sharing her screen, she must be ready.
Okay. Ready.
Put your screen, there we go, okay, got it, okay, we see your memo of today.
Terrific. And I assume you hear me.
Yes, loud and clear.
All right, okay, so variance.
Uh, Rick, 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 may I interrupt for just a moment, please? This was not transmitted to us. This is.
Well, if, if you haven't seen it, that, that's relevant to you not responding to it right now, but she's still allowed to submit it. Um, Daryl, do you know when that was sent over? I don't recall seeing that one either.
Uh, nope, hadn't been sent out yet.
Okay, well, I, I suggest you send it. Right now, so that we get it before the hearing closes, although hav- having it on the screen will, will it be submitting it? Um, okay.
It's, uh, it's on the website, it's on the town website.
Oh, okay, so it's in, all right, so it's in.
It's on what website?
No, I haven't sent this in yet.
Oh, the.
I plan to present it because it couldn't make the six P M deadline.
There was no six P M deadline, I tried to be very explicit about that. There was no six P M deadline, and there is no six P M deadline. So, please submit it.
Okay.
You know, Rick, this is, this is something that we requested from the Board of Health two weeks ago. And, and now we get it in the middle of the last hearing, and this is just a process that is not.
Bob, I, Bob, I, I hear you, and if you want, we can spend the rest of this evening, uh. Vetting, um, your feelings that you've been dealt with unfairly in the process and. Other parties that you have not dealt fairly with them, the accusations of lack of transparency are all over the map and all over the table. And I'll, I'll consult my other board members, I think it's unhelpful to go there. Um, I, 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 I hear you that you're unhappy about this. Um, and I hear others that they're unhappy about the transparency they felt they got from, from Shang on things, and. That's all, that all goes in the sauce of stuff we weigh, but I'm not gonna not accept this information from our. Uh, Board of Health, because you don't like the timing of it. I, I agree that the timing of it would have been better to preserve, presented sooner.
And I have been agree with that, however, there was not time for any of us between last night. This morning to weave in the materials that we received into the draft comments that we had ready to go. It was just a lot of work, and frankly, I have not thoroughly reviewed the peer reviewer report. So Board of Health is at a disadvantage in terms of what it's able to, uh, to comment on and guide the ZBA.
Okay, and, 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 and I will say as chair that we hear everybody's complaints. That they were not allowed enough time, but I ask that everybody move ahead and do the best they can with what they have. You, you, you have information for us on the variances, so, so, so please do the, so.
Rick, I believe they're.
No, Bob, Bob, stop.
They're not variances, legally they're waivers.
Bob, Bob, this is your one warning, you are disrupting my meeting, otherwise you get shut off. So please, control yourself. Okay, now, Daryl, it's very important that you submit this memo to us. Has it been submitted to the ZBA? When?
It has not, this memo has not yet been submitted, I prepared it to show it at this meeting.
All right, can you do it?
I will send it in, I will send it in.
But, 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 but.
I need to do that now, that's gonna use up my system resources for.
Well, well, that, that, well, then, then hop off and do that, because you submitting it.
All right.
After the hearing is closed is gonna be no good.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, so please do that, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let Bob be unhappy with me while you're doing that, come back to us when you're ready. Mr. Murchison.
Yes, Rick.
Well, you were, I, I, I cut you off because I thought you were disrupting the, this meeting, but I, I hear you how unhappy you are about the timing of these things. Um, i- is there, o- other than.
Well, that, so, so what I was interrupting about, I thought was an important use of a legal term. You were calling them, um, uh, you were calling them variances, we are not seeking variances, we are seeking waivers.
The, the variances is, is the term being used by Daryl, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a legal position on it one way or another. I agree that what you see, what, what applicants in your position seek from our board.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think Daryl should stop sharing. Daryl, can you stop sharing your screen, please?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
Bob, I certainly agree with you on that technical point that they're not.
Thank you.
I also understand why the Board of Health thinks of them as variances from their regulation, because that's in the normal non-fourty B mode, that's what they would be. Here they're, here they would be, and, uh, Mr. Alpin, correct me if I get it wrong, they would be. Waivers of local regulations inconsistent with the regional need for affordable housing. How did I do?
Yeah, that's right, it's, it's simple as waivers from the local regulations, that's what we're seeking from the law. Again, as the board knows, and we've discussed, we still have to meet the state regulations. But the local waivers, we're seeking waivers for.
Right, there's, there's no variance in the technical term, Bob is correct about that. Okay. While we're waiting for Daryl to come back, are there other people who wish to be heard? For or against the project on septic or other issues? Very quiet, okay. I will take this opportunity, while, while we're waiting for Daryl to thank everybody, hold on, just give me a moment, Michael, then I'll call on you.
Sure.
Um, to thank everybody for their, um, uh, patience through what's been a very long and difficult and, uh. Uh, in, in sometimes, sometimes unhappy process, uh, you know, these things, things going on right next to your houses, and. I understand how important that can be to people, and, um, I, I appreciate the patience that the board has gotten. Okay, Michael Lesser.
Unless, unless Daryl's ready to go.
Nope.
What?
He said no.
Okay, um, then I'll use this, uh, gap here, um, just wanted to go back to, uh. Back to a last October. Twenty-fifth, twenty-three memo, this is Michael Lesser, I guess, speaking on behalf of the Energy and Sustainability Committee, um, fifty-four Forest Street. Um, I can't tell whether we had much back and forth, Bob, about the, I guess I should speak to Rick, of, uh.
You can speak through me, go ahead.
The, uh, the whole issue of, given the local concerns about drinking water supplies. Whether the proposed conditions for, uh, water efficiency and conservation. Are things that made sense that we put forth back many months ago about, uh. About appliances being WaterSense labeled homes program, having a WaterSense label. The idea of low-flow toilets, that kind of little nitty-gritty that might. Make a big, make a difference in the overall water consumption, and whether those kind of, and, and how you're doing the outside landscaping in terms of. Uh, sort of subsurface and things like that, whether those are things that you would agree to.
And, and Bob, I think you gave a pretty good answer then, and, but I bet you remember it better than I do, so please.
Yeah, my, my, yes, thank you, Rick, my, my answer, Michael, and, you know, you and I have had this discussion offline several times, um. I am fully on board with what you're seeking, um, you know, low water usage fixtures, uh. Just the whole series of things, I think, that were, I, I don't recall every detail, uh, of your request. I, I'm agreeable to ninety percent of that, what I'm not agreeable to. Is making requirements on this project that are not made on market rate homes insurance, I just, I have an allergy to that. Um, and I am more than happy, and probably will, if you look at Abbey Road, you know, what we did at Abbey Road, the, um. Uh, back in the day, seven years ago, was state-of-the-art, uh, insulation, it was all the cutting-edge stuff. I anticipate, and we're not at that level of detail that you're talking about now for fixtures, we haven't chosen fixtures. Uh, or any of that, but I am, we're, we're on the same page, Michael, on all of this stuff, where we're on a different page. Is the regulatory issue, I just am allergic to having the town require me to do things. That they didn't require me to do when we built the house at fifty-three Farm Road, for example. Or, you know, I just, or at Abbey Road.
I'll just say that the main difference is that the scale of these projects, it's not a matter of that it's affordable or market. It's the fact that this is a very large project with intensive water use, and so that, that's why. So it's that, it's, it's not about the affordable, it's about the scale of water use in, in a, in a particular area, and therefore. Asking more than that.
Except the problem, the problem becomes with that argument that, um, affordable housing by its very nature. Is typically multifamily in bigger projects, so, you know, it's kind of a.
Bob is, Bob, Bob is right that we have to be careful not to discriminate or come up with sort of ad hoc special rules. That we wouldn't apply to other projects.
Right, I think this should apply to other projects, and it's to local.
And pass laws. Um, um, don't make it up in a ZBA hearing, that's what frustrates me, I am, Michael, you know me, I, I.
I, I know that you're interested in those things there, it's a matter of where you count.
Whether native plants, whatever.
Guys.
Taken.
You, you, you've both been very clear, thank you.
Well, we're killing time, Rick, we're waiting for Daryl to come back.
Well, but, yes, but Mary Moore wishes to speak, so.
Thanks, Rick, um, uh, Bob, you, I'll ask Rick to ask you, but in a, in a previous hearing, you mentioned that. If there was a lot of ledge removal that needed to happen, that you would not be pursuing the basements in some of the cottages or townhomes. And I know that that is not in our regulation, so I'm just curious. You know, where that falls in your comment about being allergic to things that are not applied to market rate homes. There's a lot of shallow bedrock on the site, and, you know, I think it's in an area where a lot of the houses are proposed. So I'm just curious, you know, where that falls in the sort of allergy of things.
Yeah, if, if, uh, if I might push back a little bit, Mary, we have dug holes all over that site. Um, and yes, I agree with you, there certainly is ledge on the site, you can see it in places, no doubt about it. But you tend to see it in the very steep parts of the site, you don't tend to, we did not find very much ledge. Where we were, where we intend to build houses, in the flatter areas of the site, which is where we would dig test holes, of course. Uh, that's not to say there were none, that we, we did hit ledge, as I recall. Um, in a couple of places up on what I call the Mesa, the flat area in the back. Um, but most of the other areas, we actually didn't hit ledge, but I'll, I'll go on and answer your question, and that is. I, you know, economically, it doesn't make a lot of sense for a developer to spend. A hundred thousand dollars to bust out ledge to put in a basement, because you don't recover that, right? Um, and, you know, it's just not something that we're very likely to do, am I gonna, you know, there's not a regulation against my doing it. And if I ultimately decide that, uh, I want to put a basement in a certain home where there's ledge. I will do that, there's not a regulation, however, I don't anticipate that happening, and that's what I said before, and I'm, I'm repeating it now. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Thank you.
I've sent the memo to the board, to Bob, and I'm posting it on the website now.
Great, and hopefully you're seeing it now.
I, I killed my audio, awesome, thank you, all right, so Daryl, are you back to walk us through the memo that you have now sent to us?
Yes, I am, it's also up on the screen.
Yes, yes, it is, please do so.
Excellent, all right, uh, so septic regulations first. As usual, room count is always an issue, uh, there are some unfinished spaces. That might be turned into rooms, that would be very challenging for this project. As you can see in the little table that was in the other memo that we sent, that. This project couldn't even add one more bedroom without going over the allowable. Uh, bedrooms per acre, even with the innovative alternative technology, um, so that's one point. Uh, so I'll just go through these quickly, and then if there are any you want to discuss further, we can go back, how about that?
Yes, please.
Good, okay, uh, next one has to do with garbage grinders at the local level. We require that septic systems be fifty percent larger, I can explain what that's for, um, but in any case, that is the requirement here. We do strongly recommend that garbage grinders not be installed here, and they weren't installed at the fields at Sherborne and fifty-nine North Main. And provisions were made to prevent their installation. Uh, more soil is always better for treating, down here on this one now. Um. We recommend here that compliance with the local requirements be maximized. We say that because we never did get a profile of the step trenches. And so it was impossible to precisely evaluate what conditions will be upon installation. Uh, but again, more soil, the better, more than four feet is preferred. Uh, okay, next one, distance to wetlands. Uh, although we don't feel confident in nitrogen loading analyses that have been done thus far. You know, we're not comfortable recommending a waiver, but also we think that the Conservation Commission. Would be better suited to that assessment. Water supply, there are no other regulations to fall back on, so we can't see granting waivers to. Any of our regulations. And then the last one in this funny category, standards rather than a single-family home on a single lot, I use that title, not the current one. Because this project ca- came in under the prior version of the regulations. Uh, included in the beginning is just, this is, um. Purpose of the, of section three regulations. Purpose of the, of section three regulations. And one of that is to preserve the amount of material that is on, uh, of soils on a site. Because it provides filtering for rainwater and other waters and septic effluent. And their cut and fill analysis through the project shows a large amount of material being removed. We don't know if that soil, bedrock, or mixture. Uh, certainly minimizing what's removed would be good. And we'd also recommend that a plan be put in place because that's what we'd be looking for otherwise. Is how is it going to be managed and is it truly necessary to remove it all from, from the site? What's happened in other towns is that soil gets stripped, it's valuable at times to sell that elsewhere. But it, um, it does compromise groundwater quality in the long run. Uh, we certainly recommend the EHIR, particularly the nitrogen loading analysis, which is probably. One of the most important analyses to be done for a project. Especially one of this size, it's just so very different from the other kinds of, you know, small and much more. Distributed systems that we have across town. And the last one, if there is bedrock that's to be disrupted. Uh, we have a requirement in town that perchlorate is not used. And there's really no reason it should be used, there are alternatives, other municipalities across the state have banned it. But all blasting agents, as indicated here, do contain a variety of nitrogen compounds. And that's impossible to get away from by their very nature, and that does make its way into groundwater. And given all our concern around nitrogen compounds, I think it's obvious why we wouldn't want to see that happen. That's that in a nutshell.
All right, thank you. Tetra Tech, Mr. Bulley, Mr. Dillon, I assume you have no position on any of these. Uh, thought suggestions by the Board of Health for two reasons. They're not developer materials that were submitted to you and you haven't seen them before. How am I doing?
Uh, that's correct. I, I, I believe we did recommend, uh, you know, a construction management plan. Be the, the condition for that at some point, I can speak to that item. I, I believe that was one of our conditions that we had recommended. We did note the same that, you know, the export material from the site, so.
And, uh, Mr. Murchison and the developer team, again, you're just seeing this for the first time now and therefore. You're probably not fully prepared to react to it, would that be fair?
That's correct.
Okay, um, does anyone else have commentary on this? Um, Daryl, maybe you could stop sharing your screen.
Okay.
Please keep sharing your screen because people may ask to see particular pieces. Mr. Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Brian Moore, forty nine Farm Road. I just, I, I haven't really spoken about this before, I just wanted to briefly state that. Our position after attending these meetings, Board of Health meetings and Conservation Commission meetings. Is that the local bylaws, by and large, are more restrictive than state laws. For two reasons. Number one, because there are other humans who are living in the area. Who are relying on groundwater as a resource for their consumption. And there's no contingencies anywhere for most of the people in this town. And number two, the environmental resources around these houses that are built at the density of somewhere between. Like, you know, one house per two to one house per five or six or seven acres. Are sufficient to control and allow for the natural degradation and reduction of nitrogen to occur. Before polluting other water supplies. And we think that it would be short sighted in a town such as this where everyone is relying on that for clean water. Both of those mechanisms to waive any bylaws or any municipal laws. That are, that were enacted specifically to deal with the physics, the chemistry. And the superficial soils of the town of Shermer. And our density is such right now that we have, you know, a house per every two some odd acres or something across town. And Great Rock Road is similar. They're talking about, I don't know, tenfold increase in the density. And I'm, I'm all for affordable housing, but that puts tenfold. Waste into the ground in a very, very, very tiny little magical area next to our property. And it puts all that stormwater, I mean, if those stormwater basins truly were to drain. In the seventy two hour projected, uh, time period because of the quality of these soils. Then we probably would not have seen all that flooding that we had this winter. That would have drained in three days, just like they claimed. But lo and behold, we had flooding on Farm Road for weeks, if not months. And it's only gotten worse with the building of fifty three, largely because they have compressed all the soils in the natural water course. That fifty three was built on, and there's nowhere for that water to go right now. So these bylaws were intended to protect human health by virtue of protecting the water. And our environmental resources, which are integral to us having clean drinking water for us and our families. And for the people who absolutely are going to move into these houses as well. They should not be subjugated to anything less than the water quality we have in town now. So that's why we believe that the waivers to the maximum extent possible should not be granted. By the ZBA. Thank you for hearing me.
And, and Brian, I, I, I appreciate all of that. It, it, as you are also aware. The challenge that the ZBA faces here is that forty B directs us to sweep aside. All of those additional local regulations, except, Mr. Murphy, keep me honest here. Except we're needed to protect health and safety under the stowcase. So that's, that's the difficult job we have, and that's why we get paid. Um, nothing, um, but it, but it is the job we have. Daryl.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to mention a few things, two comments that people had earlier on, and it might have, I don't know. Someone from Tetra Tech who mentioned that.
Can, can you stop sharing your screen if we're not talking about those various, those waiver requests?
Yep.
Okay, there we go, thank you.
All right. So someone from Tetra Tech mentioned that. Uh, lab analyses were the gold standard for determining soils. And I'll just point out that one of those lab analyses. Uh, was an excellent match for, uh, the field observations that were made. Because the sample was taken from, uh, the same area. And then the other one was slightly outside that area, but not as close to the other patch of different types of soils. That we saw in the northern two SAS areas. So that's part of the concern that the Board of Health has is that we have seven test pits with observations. And two civ analyses, one which matched really well from where it was taken with the, with the observations in the field. And the other that didn't. Uh, also, Bob had a question about. Something that was in the memo that we sent about, uh, what is standard procedure? Which is during installation of septic systems, the agent goes out in the field and observes conditions as. That progresses to make sure that there's nothing that is. Uh, significantly different from what was observed by just limited numbers of test pits. Uh, people encounter ledge sometimes and things have to be shifted, there are field changes, what have you. So it is an opportunity for confirmation without really doing extra work. Or, or stopping things from moving ahead, there is some risk in, uh, to the applicant of doing that. They may need to make adjustments according to what's found, but that happens with every single septic that goes in, in town. Uh, I also want to mention that we recently. Learned from, uh. I forget where, but that the Coltech chambers currently planned to be installed. At the site, um, have been discontinued by the manufacturer. And that DEP says they need to reapply. For something, approval, I'm not sure what exactly that is, or whether they're even permitted to still use them. Sounds like maybe, but not definite. Um, and just for the engineer to put that on their radar. And then with the alternative provisional use, alternative systems in general. The ZBA should be aware that you are the approving authority. The DEP approves their use in general, uh, not in general in this case, provisionally approves their use. For the, the engineered system selected. But it's up to the local authority whether they want to approve the use of that system at all. So one that the ball will be in your court and. Uh, I think one of the main concerns that. Uh, the Board of Health has is that there is a monitoring period that goes on. For some time after the installation to confirm its performance. But according to, uh, communication with T E P, that. The timing of that three years starts as soon as the first bit of effluent goes into the septic system. And I don't know what the timeframe is for how long it'll take to build this project out. But it seems unlikely to me that there will be much intensive use of the system within that first three years. Uh, or enough to be able to detect whether it's performing adequately. So one option might be to extend the test period, the monthly testing period with the parameters. That are required in the first year, out beyond some number, some period of time beyond when there's full build out. And therefore full discharges into the system. Part of the issue with this is that if anything goes wrong with this system in the future, it doesn't perform as expected. And it doesn't have a big expected, which is why it's provisional use, it's being tested, and so this will be one of the fifty systems. Um, in the state to see how it does work, um, over time and in a variety of situations. So if it fails in the future, the homeowners of this affordable housing project. Are going to have to then figure out a way to replace that system. And will the soils in the current spot still be okay? Will there be enough soils elsewhere? What'll be the expense of that, um, and the burden of doing that?
If I'm hearing you correctly, they face the same problem that all of us face if our septic system fails. Uh, except on a larger scale and more money.
Yes. And that, from what I've seen from. Small scale, even small scale wastewater treatment plants that have staff and a lot of controls. All you need, and these are for shared systems with, you know, say, multiple. Business establishments, discharging, all you need is one bad actor to wipe out all of the denitrifying bacteria. And it doesn't ta- take surprisingly little, such as, um, I've seen places that had to ban the use of antibacterial soap. In the restrooms because that was enough to kill the bacteria. So that do the denitrifying good bacteria.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you are much more expert in it than I am, but it's surprisingly easy to kill a septic system.
Yeah.
Okay, Deshawn Wang, um, if you have something that is new and not repeating materials that you have submitted to us already. Yes, sir. You're, you're muted, sir. Try, try it again.
Okay, if, uh, if I may just quick, uh, comments or respond to, uh, to the, to Daryl's, uh, comments. About the failure of the, the system. So, so first, I would like to say the two parts of it. One is hydraulic failure, one is the treatment failure. So the hydraulic failure is due to the caulking of the leaching field. Which I don't see anything relating to the, uh, to this, to the system we choose. The Sistar thirteen point five is basically three of, uh, general use approved, four point five. I, of course, I'm not the manufacturer, I'm just, as, as an engineer, so rationale, I think their performance should be very close. And, uh, they, even though the nitrogen say they did it, quite meet the nineteen or twenty five. From all my experience, I have experienced both hydraulic failure. And due to anti-septic, uh, use and caused a temporary, uh, male function. Of the treatment, so which can be restored very easily whenever that was spotted. Because then, so it must be somebody they didn't know, so which can be educated through the, the community. And the hydraulic ones, as I'm trying to make sure is the settling, the recycling, so the TSS removal. And, uh, uh, the, uh, OBD, uh, the, the BOD removal.
But, but, but Deshawn. The, the question is, can these systems fail? The answer is, they can, it's not terribly likely, but. You, you have more, more to say than that, I, I, I don't think we need to hear the, the fifteen ways that they might not fail. Because that's the most likely case.
Yeah, no, maybe let me put it in a simple, quick ways. The failure of the system is much less than a traditional. Single family house septic system.
It's more robust. Got it, okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Mr. Lesser.
Michael Lesser, fifty four Forest Street, just speaking as a resident. I guess I've been hearing about this soils issue of whether it's. Uh, sandy loam or loamy sand for a few meetings now, um, or whatever it is. Um, and I was just listening to the comment that of what Daryl was talking about during the installation. Whether that's the time for the, uh, the actual truth of what's there and how, and what the system. Size should be based on that classification, is it, I, so I wanted to know whether it's a condition or whether it's already inherent in the project. That there is the appropriate monitor, uh, observation during installation by, let's say. The Board of Health, uh, to see that the soils really are what, uh, that seems to be. Accepted now, even though there's controversy about it, but whether we can just have that kind of, uh. Testing and observing the soils then, and then see whether there needs to be any changes at that time. And whether that's a condition that the ZBA can do or to protect health and whether it will do it. Thank you.
It, it, it's certainly a fair question. Mr. Murchison, are you responding to that or do you have something else?
No, I'm responding to that, well, I'm responding.
Please do then.
Yeah, so I, I just want to point out to the board and to everyone assembled. That there have been two professionals, one hired by the town and one hired by the developer. Both of them have agreed that the lab is the gold standard. The lab has weighed in. Are we a community that makes up science or do we use science? And, and the science is clear, and if, if this gets litigated, it'll be clear again. It's just, there's nothing about this that should be controversial.
Bob, as I said to Deshawn, I, I hear you about the enthusiasm you have for your position, but re- re- repeating it again and again is, is not.
Well, you're, Rick, you're allowing people to say the same things over and over again, so I need to, to respond to them over and over again.
If you and your council, at the end of the day, go through all of our hearing things and feel you have not had a fair chance to speak. Feel free to do that. The tapes will speak for themselves.
Uh, they will, yes.
Okay, I, I, I get it, I get it. Uh, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the person who's next is, is, is Adam somebody?
Oh, I can't just, just a reaction to.
No, 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 this is, no, I'm sorry, Michael. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Adam Page, three Peckham Hill Road, uh, just curious. Will the applicant be required to do a new wetland stimulation? I think I saw a memo that suggested the current one expires. I think I saw a memo that suggested the current one expires in June. Of this year.
Bob, I think you can answer that. I think the answer is they have, they're gonna do, you're gonna do wetlands after, right?
No, the, the wetlands have been delineated on the site through the N O Is that the Conservation Commission uh. Uh, issued back in, uh, Adam is correct, I believe it was July of twenty twenty-one. And what that means is we're gonna need to request what I believe is a perfunctory extension of those N O Is.
Just a, a brief follow-up, it, it does, was that done during like a historic drought? Do you expect a significant change?
Yeah, so, so the answer to that, Adam, is that wetlands are not delineated by water. They're delineated by plants, uh, and the plants change over many, many years, uh, not uh, through one season or another. So uh, the answer would be um, i- in terms of an extension, no, it would be extended as um. As it, as the N O I was written and the, and the uh, wetlands were delineated. But they don't, wetlands don't change. They change over decades. They don't change over season, you know, a few seasons.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you for, thank you for that answer. Um, Ju- Julie Dreyfus, I think you're next.
I was actually just going to answer, answer Michael's question, even though it's now slightly out of order. Um, for every system that is installed, a- after the leaching field is excavated. The agent comes out and observes before the trenches are installed. And so if the soil that the system has been designed for does not match the soil that is seen in situ. Then the permit is voided and they have to reapply. And so what the board and our memo requested is, given that there's been controversy between the applicant and the board. To resolve that issue, we've asked for a neutral third party that is a soil evaluator to participate in that observation. So that we don't have any more of this back and forth.
Okay, that's a very clear answer. Thank you. Sort of the U N observer of septic installations.
That would be the lab.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Um, all right, Deshawn, I think you were next.
I, I think so, it's a fair uh, so verification during construction. So we believe that we did many uh, adequate soil testing throughout the site. We didn't hit any ledge. Uh, the soil, I was not sure, Darrell, that, uh, commenting on the soils is uh, it's not consistent with my observation. My observation of the soils throughout the site is a loamy sand. And only one or two mark was, on his note, is a loamy sand to sandy loam. And uh, so the two soil samples actually, if you say inconsistent. Is the lower end of the leaching field which turned out a median sand, which is better soils than I rated on my soil forms. So that's what I want to make clarify uh, on, on that information because I, uh, Darrell's comment is not clear. What inconsistency uh, from the lab or inconsistency from Mark's notes. So I know uh, Mark's notes is lonely sender to send you all. And that's just clarifying that information.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Michael Lesser, briefly, if it's, if it's new.
Uh. First, as a resident, just a clarification that sure this testing or whatever, but I think, I appreciate Julie's comment. Cause then you see the whole area as opposed to a few selective sites of where sampling was done, so I appreciate that. Now, Michael Lesser as Conservation Commission, um, the uh, yes, they'll have.
Looks to be the same guy.
Uh, geez, no, it's really.
Different hat, different hat.
Um, I'll get my third hat, uh, but uh, yes, they'll have to come back to see how the delineation is. Delineations are unlike what Bob said, it's not just, it's not just plants. Actually, the more defining term, the defining issue for a lot of wetlands is the soils. Uh, and plants are part of that analysis, uh, just to correct that. And yes, we have to consider whether anything has changed and whatever else before agreeing to extend a delineation. Uh, there and whether that is going to be part of the N O I that they'll file for this project since those previous ones. Uh, were done under different uh, project activities and there has not been a filing for this project. So we will look at those things.
Would you anticipate, Michael, that a delineation would change for affordable housing versus the market rate housing that was previously the subject of the N O I?
Nice, nicely loaded question. Uh, the uh, no, it's uh, we do the same thing that we do for any of the projects, uh.
No, my point is you delineated the wetlands on this site for market rate housing. And now you're suggesting that it might change for affordable.
No, it's only because of the time, it's only because of time. It's only because of time and that we have, we're obligated to look at it again because it changes. That's our regulatory requirement.
Want to make sure that we're not differing the, that the wetlands don't change based on the type of housing that's being proposed.
Right, you don't have to make those kind of references, uh.
Well, your board members have actually said that out loud in several meetings.
Okay, all right, that, 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 okay. Both, both of you, both of you, that's enough. That is enough, okay? Bob is correct that the wetlands delineations do not change by, based on the type of housing. We're not gonna have a lot of insinuations that the, that the cons comm does or does not do that. If they do or do not do that, and it's so proven, then that'll be a bad day for them. Okay, Deshawn.
I, I saw, so as a wetland scientist, I, I saw pottery, uh, agreed with the both of them to some degree. Wetlands is delineated based on three things, with the, the plants and the soils and hydrology. So a- as far as I understand, we haven't done much of things on uh, on the septic system or the, the area. Which will change in any of those uh, communities, uh, from what I observed. The wetland edge was pretty much like a drop off into an intermittent stream, so that's what, just for your information. And so we should uh, be allowed to request uh, extension on it, but it's, I mean, we, we will, we will let the process take care of that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Who else wishes to speak?
Uh, I don't know if I can raise my hand, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is Mark for.
You certainly can. You certainly can. Go ahead, Mark.
May I jump in now?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just wanted to let everyone know that in Title Five, you're not allowed to use sieve analysis. For supplementing deep coal analysis, uh, it's not allowed. So I'm not for sure if there's anything in writing that indicates that. I know the only thing in writing in respect to doing a sieve analysis. Is if you can't do a percolation test due to high groundwater. That's the only thing the state allows. And the state frowns on it because they penalize you if you do that. If you use a sieve analysis for a percolation test, you cannot add on a bedroom to your house. So I want to make that very clear. I don't know where uh, this information came from.
But, 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 but Mark, I, unless I misheard the various engineers, the sieve analysis was used to determine soil type. Not to determine a perk rate.
But it's not allowed for determining soil type. The state only allows you to go out in the field and do your soil evaluation. If people want to supplement it, so be it, but it's not allowed. And I will ask Mr. Dillon about it too, where, where that is written writing.
Please, 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 please let me ask, ask Mr. Dillon if you feel indulgent. Mr. Dillon, is it? Is that true that the sieve analysis is not allowed in terms of the soil uh, uh, evaluation?
Um, sieve analysis is used all the time um, in determination. He's correct, when you're below the water table, you need to determine the soil type. And it's used all the time in Title Five.
But I don't have it in writing in Title Five, Mr. Chairman, is all I'm saying. I saw, I have never seen anything in writing saying sieve analysis will supplement. The soil evaluators' reviews.
Have you seen anything in Title Five that says they cannot do what Mr. Dillon says they do all the time?
There's nothing in writing that says you can, but I have never seen anything that says you cannot. I think, as I said earlier, it could be a supplement, but it's not, if we're out soil evaluating. We are to do our soil evaluation per our guidelines as soil evaluators in the field.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for those thoughts.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Um, anybody else? Okay. So, Mr. Murchison, I think this brings us to sort of where we started, which is. Do you think there's more wood to chop here? Do you wish to extend? Do you think we should extend or would you like the public hearings to end?
Uh, unless there's something else we can provide to uh, the board, um, I think we should uh, call it a day, end it.
All right, board, uh, well, I'll ask the board members first, then I'll throw it out to the general group. Board members, how do you feel about that? Do we, is there more uh, is there more juice to be squeezed here? Or have we, uh, we reached the point of diminishing returns in terms of trying to get more information on which to base our decision?
Well, uh, if I might say something, Rick. I think uh, the applicant has indicated that he's content with the state of the record now. And that being the case, um, I don't, I don't see any need to extend the hearings.
Mr. McBride, Mr. Labby?
Um, I guess my thoughts are, um. Given the Board of Health's late um, memo, I would just caution, you know, the applicant that maybe he wants to extend. I, I, I don't want to offer that frankly, but I think that, you know, if he's so concerned about any new information, I think that's prudent for his, from his perspective. But um, I do not have any further questions. If the applicant is, is happy with the record at this point, um, then. Um, I am as well.
Mr. Labby?
Yeah, I, I have nothing further to add.
Okay, and, and, and everybody else on the call, this is entirely up to the board and the applicant. Um, but if someone has some reason they want to uh, raise something we missed as to why this should be extended. Um. It's a good time to speak now or forever hold your peace. I see Mr. Murchison. I see Mr. Fennel.
Yeah, no, well, sorry. Okay, um, I just, I appreciate what Zach said about the memo that came in in the middle of the hearing tonight. Um, I have had a chance to uh, read through it, uh, not carefully, of course, but uh, uh, I did get a chance to read through it. Can I just ask through you, Rick, uh, one question of Darrell on this memo without your, right?
Sure, ask away.
Yeah, so, so Darrell, can you just confirm that uh, you are um, uh. By this memo saying that we do not require any um, waivers to Section Two, which is the uh, the wells. That, that we are completely compliant with Board of Health regulations on wells. Can you just confirm that?
I don't think it says that at all, Bob. I'll let Darrell speak first.
Well, she, she said she's listed out the things. Uh. That we uh, that she's saying that we shouldn't be granted waivers for. Uh, and there's nothing in Section Two, so I'm assuming that means, I, I am not aware that, I, I, let me say it positively. I believe we are completely compliant with all of the water supply regulations of the Board of Health. Uh, and I just wanted to confirm that by this memo.
Okay, so Darrell, uh, do you understand that question and would you choose to answer it? Uh-oh. Darrell? Maybe she has to dial back in.
I, I had gotten muted by someone else, I guess. Um, all right. So I think I would like to ask Mark for comment and before he does. Uh, because I haven't looked at the recent plans to see what might have changed. I know he's been looking at that. And I do recall that the board had concerns about one of the wells uh, not being adequately. Didn't look like it would be adequately protected, given its proximity to a roadway. And also one that the wellhead might experience flooding from the pond that's on the south. Um, east portion of the property that grows insurance.
But, but Darrell, I, I think this question is simpler, simpler than you think. Let me try to rephrase it. Bob is asking if your board has signed off on the wells as compliant with all local requirements. And if the answer is, no, we haven't so signed off yet, that's all you need to say. If the answer is, yes, we have so signed off, that would be helpful for him to hear.
Okay, uh, we have not.
Okay. Okay.
Because things are still the problem and we haven't seen the, the peer reviewers' report. I mean, we've seen it, but we haven't reviewed it.
Right, right, and, and you're, you're also not saying you think there is a horrible problem, you're just saying we're not gonna weigh in at this point.
At the last time that we went over it as a board, we did not, we identified those few things I noted.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Arthur Fennel, I think you're next.
Arthur? Thank you, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So i- it seems like our collective time together may finally be coming to a close. Uh, and I just wanted to say to you and to the members of the Z B A, I wanted to thank you for your careful attention to this matter over all these many months. Uh, and to say, um, your, your diligence, thoughtfulness and conscientious leadership in stewarding this hearing. We speaks the best of our town and our town boards. And I understand that you're, I guess, rolling off the board or at least off the chairperson capacity, and I wanted to thank you for your service to the town.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you. That's very, very kind of you to say. Um, I'll get paid the same, whether, whether I'm an associate member or off the board or the chair, it's, it's. You still get nothing, nothing from the, it's like Billy Preston said, nothing, nothing is nothing. Um, Sarah Raggy.
Um, I just want to say that I know the conversation is uh, been primarily about septic. But I will reiterate what I have sent to the board in the past, which is that my concern is about having a public water supply as a delivery. Mechanism for this community. And, and the reasons for that is that I find it was dysfunctional at Abbey Road. And I don't think it will be uh, improvement for Farm Road Homes.
Yep, yep, that, 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 it's a good reminder. It's well documented now in the record. Thank you. Uh, Brian Moore.
Uh, Brian Moore, four nine farm. Rick, I just wanted to reiterate exactly what Arthur said. You have been really championing fair and equitable play here. We appreciate it. Our neighbors appreciate it and uh, volunteers, you know, it's a tough line of work. So thank you very much for your time and service on the board. I for one, oh, your personal thank you for that.
All right, well, thank, th- thank you very much, Brian. Uh, it, it is our job and, and, and it is a, 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 a board team. There's a lot of uh, support that shows up behind, behind the scenes, so. Uh, thank, thank you all. Uh, Board, uh, Mr. Murchison?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Sarah's comment on the public water supply issue, uh, and get a, you know, a, a last uh, uh, series of points in. So we all have private wells that we test and maintain in town. Every one of us has a private well. Including the residents at Abbey Road, including the residents at fifty-nine North Main Street. We all get the job done. We test our wells. We, I mean, there are drinking water. We, we take care of our, our own uh, resources. Mast D E P has made a written determination that our design is compliant with all of their regulations. The exact legal structure and engineering design was approved by the Sherbin Board of Health for market rate homes at Abbey Road. And now I'm hearing people say they don't want this structure and I, I just find that very frustrating. I think it's wrong. Um, it's, it's Mast D E P's job to tell us whether I meet the requirements uh, to be a public water supplier or not, so thank you.
All right, again, well articulated in the record already. Understood. Okay, um. Board members, I would entertain a motion to um, close the public hearing on Farm Road Homes. And cut off further public comment and submissions.
I would make that motion, Rick.
Sarah second.
Uh, seconded as long as Bob is comfortable with the record and I don't know if I've heard that clearly, but.
I am comfort- comfortable with the record. Thank you, Zach.
Okay, fair enough. Good, a, a, a good question to ask. All right, it's been moved and seconded to close. All right, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on Farm Road Homes. Um, any further discussion, board members? I don't see any. All right, all in favor, say aye, opposed, nay. Um, do it by roll call. No back votes, aye.
Pitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, public hearing closed. Thank you all for your time and patience. Um, our, our deliberation hearings, um. And we probably ought to start setting those discussions up, um. Should, should start right away, um, because we've got a fairly short window to, uh, decide what to do and then, and then render a decision. What, what, what are your schedules like, gentlemen? In the, in the, in the next couple of weeks? I see, I see Zach making faces like, oh, I don't like this.
I am traveling, I am traveling the next two weeks. Um, I could maybe squeeze in a meeting. Next evening, next week in the evening, but I'll be abroad the following week, so, um.
All right, um, so, uh. So you're saying the week of that begins, um, Monday, the twenty-seventh, Memorial Day, you're around.
Uh, I am traveling four, five and six to Chicago, so I have.
Four, five and six of June, okay.
That's, that's right. And then I'm in London, um, ten to fifteen.
Okay, so we have to try to work around that. And maybe if you can just shoot Genie an email sometime after this, we'll. We'll try to figure it out. Um, but if we can set one, then we can set another, um. Uh, twenty-seventh, Tuesdays, the twenty-eighth, um, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. That, uh, we do a deliberation. We, they, they, also, by the way, they don't have to be as, as we did with, um, Greenwood Homes. They can be like in the morning or some other times because we're not, you know, the public's in. Public is certainly invited to attend and they can watch and things like that, but it's, it's a little different than a public hearing where we're asking people to, to speak. Could, could Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, work for you, Zach?
Yes.
Maybe we do it in the morning?
Uh, let me check.
You're thinking three AM, Jonathan?
Well, eight AM would be fine.
Yeah, I could, um. I, I'm busy from ten to eleven, but I am otherwise free before twelve, so.
So we could do, we, we could do eight to ten on the twenty-ninth?
Okay.
Uh, hang on, let me just check my own schedule. Nothing, anything is exactly going to London, but.
I apologize. I haven't taken a vacation in about eighteen months, so I, you know.
I'm, 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 I'm with you. I'm, I'm taking two days together this week and they're the first two since September of twenty-two. Ridiculous, um. Yeah, uh, so Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, eight AM to ten AM.
I could do that.
Um, Todd, work for you?
Yeah, I can, I can make that work.
Zach, yes?
Yes.
John, yes?
Yep.
All right, I'm, I move that we schedule our first deliberation hearing for Farm Road Homes, Wednesday morning. Twenty-ninth of May, twenty twenty-four, eight AM to ten AM by Zoom. Obviously, public, the world is welcome to come watch us if they. Have a, have a really particularly dull life and think having us talk about things is interesting to them. Genie, can you make that happen?
I can. I'll post it tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much. Um, gentlemen, do we have, gentlemen and Genie, do we have any other business tonight or do we do, do we adjourn?
We adjourn and we do this again on Thursday.
Correct. All right, um, I will be away on Thursday, but I will watch Thursday's tape. I haven't missed any of the other meetings, so that'll be my one miss on Washington.
Okay.
All right, um, and Zach, you're stepping in as acting chair Thursday night, right?
That's right.
In preparation for your new life.
Lucky me.
It's even more fun than you imagine.
I just, I hope I earn, uh, thank you from, uh, Art and, uh, Brian before, you know, before my tenure's up, so.
All right, all right. Thank you all very much. We will see you, uh, we'll speak to you on the morning. Oops, Brian Moore was raising his hand. Nope, all right. I'm hoping nobody's raised. All right, so move to adjourn the ZBA meeting. Um, I, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any debate? I see none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. No back votes, aye, to adjourn.
Pitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, everybody, have a good evening. I don't know how the Celtics are doing, but, uh, now we can go watch.
So much.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.